Everyone, welcome to the Oviedo City Council Work Session. It's Monday, May 22nd, a little bit after 6:00. We have four members present. Councilman Britton is on his way. This time, I will turn it over to Mr. Cobb for introductions.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have an interesting work session for you tonight. Mr. Carmody and Ms. Fury, our state lobbyists, are here with us tonight to give us a recap of the legislative session and the things that occurred in Tallahassee this year that have an impact on us. We thought it was an opportune time to have them come and provide this recap. As we're in the process of putting together our budget for '17, '18, and one of the things that we asked Chris to do was to tell us all the things that the legislature did that directly impacted. And so, I'll turn it over to Mr. Carmody and let him provide the recap.
All right. And just before we do that, let the record show that Councilman Britton has joined us.
Sorry I'm late?
No, no worries.
Got stuck at that long traffic light.
So, I have, and good evening. I have a couple items here. I sent this to you, Jerry, but we printed it as well.
I think I got it.
Oh, okay. Well, we can send it afterwards when you need a copy. So, this is just to save you the PowerPoint.
I've got two files.
This was an interesting session. And I'll, so we've been doing this for several years. There's some in the lobby guard who've been doing it for several decades. And even those, some of the folks who are at four decades plus serving up in the legislature, said the same thing. It's just they've never seen a session quite like this. So, I say that at the outset to say, interesting things happened. And by the way, if I didn't, this is Katie Florrie on our team. Most of you know her. She was Jason Broder's chief legislative aide for six years and then joined our team right around September of last year. So, we wanted to make sure we had the extra firepower there.
And one of the best, of course.
So, session 2017. At a glance, there were 3,000 bills filed, including those new appropriations bills. So, if you recall, we had several that Jason and David Simmons put in for us, appropriations bills, but 3,000 total filed, only 249 passed. And so, that number is interesting because it's the lowest total in the last 15 years if you don't count the 2015 session that ended about three days early. And by ending three days early, they probably cannibalized 18 to 20 bills in that process there. So, this really is the lowest number, which should tell you something, kind of the approach both the House and Senate took at that. They passed an $82.9 billion budget that is slightly more, or, well, there you go. At the bottom, I have the note there. Only $60 million larger than the current budget. So, they kept it pretty stable. There was going into it, they had a surplus, but you heard the House concerned with the out years of not being a surplus, saying they were going to cut, and they were going to cut recurring projects, they were going to cut anything they could cut. So, what you see there and the points there is $34 billion for health care, $24 billion for education, $14 billion for transportation, the road projects, and then economic, some economic development, excuse me, built in there. Corrections and DOJ got $4.5 billion and then $4 billion for general government, which has helped run the agencies and the various groups there. Governor has not received the budget yet, but once he does, he'll have 15 days to act on it. If you've been following the news, the blogs or what have you, you know that there are some that think he might just veto the whole thing. I don't think he'll do that. There are some that think he'll veto the education portion of the budget. That's become, I think it was reported today in Sunburn, that in the calls or letters coming into the governor's office, three to one are in favor of vetoing the entire conforming bill, which we'll talk a little bit about that later, and the education portion of the budget, and forcing them to come back to Tallahassee to work on that again. So, once he does get it, though, he has line out and veto, and he has 15 days. We've been working, not just on y'all's appropriations, but on other things with his staff quite a bit to make sure that we have a good posture and a good idea of what they're going to be doing. Tax package.
So, the tax package, I'll keep it brief and just do the most important things for you guys. There is a .2% permanent reduction to the business rent tax or the commercial lease tax. It went from 6 to 5.8 now it will be permanent. The back-to-school sales tax will be.
Does that really make any difference in anyone's life, .2%?
A little bit.
Symbolic. It's symbolic, sort of like the intangibles back in the 90s. What am I thinking of that they phased out? That tax, but same thing, slowly but surely. Part of this, though, is they're scoring it sort of pie in the sky when the revenue estimators, so when they say we want to cut it 5.5, they're giving an estimate, but they don't really know until you actually cut it how much it will cost. So, with .2, in a lot of ways now, the legislature and the Department of Revenue and others will actually be able to really measure what it means as a cut, as opposed to previously, it really was kind of pie in the sky.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Back-to-school sales tax, beginning of August. The hurricane preparedness tax will be the beginning of June. And there's the tax break on materials for construction for rural areas of opportunity, and then they increase the brownfields tax credit.
Okay. So, what is a rural area of opportunity? What's the definition of that?
We're not in one, if that helps.
I'm sorry?
We're not in one.
Okay. I assume we wouldn't be.
No. So, this was pushed heavily by some folks up in the Gainesville region, not Gainesville, but more of the surrounding counties over there that are, I guess you would call traditional rural. And so, I can get you the actual numbers of why it is. We didn't actually represent anyone that had a dog in that hunt, so to speak, so I didn't get in the weeds of what those numbers were, once I realized, again, y'all and others weren't affected by it. But the push was from some of the more rural-focused legislators that wanted to put a little, some opportunities out there for them.
Encourage development in the world.
Yeah. Now, brownfields, that will see some net benefit here and across the region. There's lots of areas that are ripe for brownfield credits, and there's been such a bad backlog the last couple of years. In the last few years, they've done a good job of funding it to get it, that backlog removed, but for, you know, if you get $5 million to $10 million, that'll reduce the backlog, but it'll still be a backlog. So, they're working their way through that. So, gambling, just quickly, no dice on that, no fun, actually fully fun intended. The House, so what happened is the House passed their gambling package, the Senate passed theirs. They were light-years apart. The House had a total retraction of gaming. The Senate had expansion of gaming and dealt with some of the voter-approved slot recreendums in some of the southern counties, including the Gretna, which just was the subject of the floor of Supreme Court. Most people believe they were setting themselves up for a conference. They did go into conference, and they started to move closer together, notably fantasy sports was sort of, they found common ground on that, they found common ground on some decoupling to some degree, which was good. As you all know, there's Seminole highlight here, and it's no secret that the owner would love to decouple that and kind of remove the highlight portion and do some redevelopment there, which would probably be good for this particular region. But the gaming bill eventually died. And part of it was just, the Senate wanted to have some kind of slot gaming expansion. The House wasn't having any of that. And so, until that changes, they won't pass a bill. The interesting thing about that is, we all know the Seminole Compact, which is Tampa, Hollywood, and those areas where you can do blackjack. The blackjack exclusivity expired a couple of years ago. They had a five-year window. But because the courts ruled that the state violated that compact by allowing some of the other card rooms to have designated player games, because it was like you would just, as a resident, would be the designated player, and they could do blackjack, that's how they got around it. They didn't get around it, though. The court said they were violating the law. That technically is a violation of the compact, which means the Seminoles can use the blackjack and the other games that they had in exclusivity through the full 30 years of the compact. So, they're now paying money to the state in escrow, sort of in good faith, but one has to think, after a couple of years, they might just say, you know what? If you're not going to pass a new compact, we're just going to stop paying you, and we're going to take this exclusivity all the way to the 30-year runway. They haven't done it yet. They're being good partners, but that's kind of what's looming over this process. Pension reform, a little bit of that this year?
So, in order to get the state employee pay raise, they added pension reform to the bill as things were moving, and the employee pay raise, that's $1,000 to $1,400 permanent pay raise. And for the pension reform, I don't believe that this has, this isn't you guys yet, this is for FRS, but that just automatically makes the default investment plan rather than the pension, and you'd have to opt into the pension within nine months.
So, we put that on your radar, because there was a lot of things in that universe you probably were paying attention. I know, Brian, you and I corresponded, firefighter presumption legislation that was in there on cancer and other issues, that did not pass. The House held the line on that. The Senate was pushing for it. The Senate Budget Chair, that was a major priority of his. But we put this in here, again, you guys are in FRS, but there's more coming in the two-year window that is, it's the House leadership and their focus on this. So, we will keep you abreast of that. Medical marijuana, you probably saw, there is no legislation that passed. There's been a lot of talk of special session. The real rub between the two were caps on the licenses of like dispensaries. So, there's seven growers now. The growers that are there kind of were resigned to the fact that both the Senate and House were going to expand the number of licenses available. They were, they were fine with, they didn't like it, but they could live with that. The monopoly was going to grow a little bit, so to speak. But the big issue was the Senate put in caps of how many actual dispensaries they could have, based on the number of patients. So, and it was a pretty low number, all things considered, where these license holders on the, to grow marijuana and dispense it, they didn't think they could make enough money to make it viable. What happened? The House wanted no caps. An offer of a compromise at the end was it was going to be 100 dispensaries per license, which essentially would put one in every county and a couple, and a few extras, but the Senate wasn't going to go to that position. So, ultimately, the bill died. So, what happens if there's no special session? Department of Health will promulgate the rules. That's under the constitutional amendment. And so, by July 1, they're required to have rules. In the early set of the rules, most licensed growers could live with them, based on our understanding. Why it's relevant is if they get to July 1, no special, well, let me, special session or not, there will be something on the books by July 1. And so, then cities like yourself, counties will be ripe for dispensaries to start moving in, if, should they, should the ordinances allow for it. So, if you have a temporary moratorium, you'll probably be okay for as long as the temporary moratorium is there, as long as there's signs that you're trying to do some ordinance. If you have a permanent moratorium, I would say, and again, I haven't delved in full legal issues on this, but I've called around to get a better understanding of it, you and anyone like you would probably be subject to lawsuits if someone really wanted to be in your backyard as far as for a dispensary. So, I only tell you that, I don't think there'll be a special session unless they come back for the budget. The Senate, the House was hot on it, the Senate, I thought, was hot on it. President Negron has since cooled significantly as far as that goes. So, what we're hearing now, again, anything can change, is that they might let this go to Department of Health, let them promulgate the rules. And then next session, as dispensaries are popping up around the state, and there's still seven growers, they'll do essentially a glitch bill for a bill that never passed. They'll take what DOH did, if there's obviously problems with it, they'll fix it, and then they'll try to figure out what they're going to do with this cap situation. So, it's coming, just not as quickly as everyone thought it was going to be.
Didn't I read though that the Department of Health has to make the rules that then it's got to go through some hearings or something, and they really don't go into effect till October or something?
It's my understanding, and I'll get, I'll make a note to get a further answer on that, but it's my understanding they have to get it all done by July. And so, they had those sample rules put forward.
I think they had that done, Chris, but I think then it has like a cooling off and review period, just double time.
Yeah.
You might be right, but I just remember reading that from that news service emails that we get all the time. They had a big, long thing about it. I'm fairly certain that's what it said.
I'll get you on that. Is it October?
Thanks.
I will tell you, not this city council, but another city council member from another city in this county asked me how they could become an investor. I can make some calls for you if you'd like.
Have to be a private investor, because I would imagine, since it's not legal by federal law, that it can't be.
No, I would avoid a public-private partnership on that. Okay, so Lakota Chobi, so we're going, as we get through the rest of this deck, there were a lot of issues that drove that final week of discussions, priorities of the House and the Senate, that ended up in conforming bills, ended up in the budget, and kind of what was the trading pieces. Lakota was one of the major trading pieces. To the Senate's credit, they forecasted the issues they care about way early. So, from a negotiating point of view, that's probably not the best move, because it tells the other side what you want, but no one can claim you didn't know what the Senate cared about. And President Negron made it very clear, he wanted to get reservoir land to the south, or pretty much anywhere, but definitely to the south of Lakota to help with the blue algae problems that they have. So, Senator Rob Bradley, who's in the northeast Florida area, he put forward Senate Bill 10 on behalf of the President. It went through many rounds of negotiation. The House said all along they wouldn't bond it, they wouldn't fund it, et cetera, and as it got closer to budget negotiations, they finally came up with a deal that could be cut, and you see that in front of you. But there will be land to the south, it won't be sugar land, so the Florida Sugar and others, or US Sugar, rather, they were able to stay out of that and avoid any kind of the pitfalls there. And now, it's a question of whether the federal government will come through on some of those fundings. And you've seen some of the congressmen and women and the senators start to step up on what that'll be. So, a big win for the Senate, but they had to trade a lot to get it, which we'll talk a little bit about in the conforming bills. Here's a big win for cities and counties, public records. So, it's no surprise or no secret that there is a cottage industry that has popped up with people just filing public records requests with cities and counties, saying, just, I just need X, this document or that document, hoping that you will, you, meaning whoever's in charge of that, will mess up and not timely produce the documents. Then you get sued, and under the current form of the law, it says the court shall give attorney's fees for these records. It could be just, one, I need a copy of the agenda from last week if you don't turn it over in a timely manner. So, there's been plenty of cases where the judges have absolutely admonished the plaintiffs in saying, you did this just as a gotcha, you didn't need the record, you got the records, you were just trying to get attorney's fees. But the law is what the law is, and they had to give the attorney's fees. So, what has passed now is there's still shall. The First Amendment Foundation and others were not comfortable getting rid of the shall, but they put a number of exceptions in there that basically says, that allows a judge, when they feel like it's a gotcha lawsuit, they feel that you, even though you didn't get it in the perfect time, you did get it to them, and they could have avoided the lawsuit and getting an attorney, that they don't have to award attorney's fees. And there's now sort of like, if you're, like, if anyone in the construction industry knows, you have to give notice if you're going to file a construction lawsuit for them, someone to repair the damages. Now, you get notice. Okay, I'm giving you your five days' notice, I need the records by five days or else. So, now you have a chance to say, okay, okay, if we were delayed, we'll fix that now. And hopefully, this will completely eliminate the lawsuits, except in actual situations where a lawsuit might be necessary and save y'all some money. Higher education, this was again, another priority of Senate President Negron. If you have kids in college or soon to be in college, the good news is, bright futures for the 100% scholarships are now going to be going up back to the 100% level, which is nice. It's community colleges.
Would have been nicer four years ago.
Yeah, I agree.
Can I get a refund?
Let's figure, is that a claim bill we need to do?
Yeah, I think that's what we need.
Yeah, the good news is, they finally figured out the damage they did, and kudos to this governor for not letting tuition go up under his watch, because it could have been a lot worse with decoupling. That's when it really started to get out of hand. But bright futures, now summer classes are funded as well. Community colleges took a bit of a hit. That was Senate President Negron's priority has been, he thought community colleges, now state colleges, were growing at a little too fast of a clip when they were allowed to go to four-year colleges. So, he, you'll see, returns community to the college system title, creates a new governing board. They're going to be okay, but both President Negron and Senate President designate Galvano are of like mind on this. So, they're going to have a rough couple of years as far as growing their programs and getting higher funding from the state. President Negron's focus is, we have a higher, we have a university system for a reason. That should be where the primary focus of those dollars are. The community, in their mind, the community college system at most should be a two-year program that filters into the, and not just four-year degrees. Counterargument to that, of course, is we have a major shortage of nursing, or nurses across the state, and universities are expensive, and they can't seem to meet the demand, but state colleges like Seminole and Volusia are doing a pretty good job of meeting that demand. So, somewhere, they'll figure out a balance, but this year was not a good year if you were a community college. Wasn't awful, but it wasn't good, that's for sure. So, these conforming bills, this is what you've probably heard a lot about in the last couple of weeks as the budget was passed and rolled out. This is easily the most we've seen in our, in our time of policy being put into a conforming bill, which again, the whole idea is to conform the budget to the laws, or conform the laws to the budget, so to speak. The education bill is the one that's getting all the press, but the Visit Florida, Enterprise Florida stuff was wrapped into that. Some higher education stuff was wrapped into that. The pension reform was wrapped into those conversations. A lot of stuff, and the reason that's relevant is, it's not, it doesn't go through a committee, it's not debated, you can't amend it on the floor. So, if you don't like what's in the conforming bill, you have to choose to vote up or down on it. But by voting down, you're essentially messing up that particular part of the budget, and everyone knows sort of how the session closes. If one conforming bill goes down, the whole thing goes down. And that's like, the education was the last conforming bill voted on the Senate, and the whole debate was not around whether they liked the bill. It was clear, a majority of the senators did not like the bill. It was whether they were going to kill the whole budget process over this bill, and they ultimately decided not to. The governor may do that for them. Education, pre-K-12, still high levels of funding, if you're a pre-K-12 advocate. The interesting one, I'll look to the third bullet there, is Schools of Hope. That was what was a major sticking point in the negotiations, and that's this House Bill 7069, a 274-page conforming bill. The Schools of Hope funding largely takes the state dollars and pushes them into charter school funding, and the whole idea, the focus is, and this was a speaker priority, the focus is on failing schools to allow schools of hope to come in where failing schools are now. No surprise there, that's highly controversial if you're a public school advocate of traditional public schools, and that's what's driving a lot of the controversy on this. They changed the best and brightest a little bit, that's the teacher bonus program. That, they probably fixed, probably more than anything. The other program was based on your SAT score from high school, when it might have been 30 years ago for a teacher. My brother, who's a teacher, loved it, because he had a good SAT score, and now he got the benefit of that, but he even openly admitted, this has nothing to do with how good of a teacher I am or am not. So, they, to their credit, they fixed that part of it, which is a little more tied to your actual performance as a teacher, not how you did on a standardized test 20 years ago. Okay. Visit Florida, Enterprise Florida. We all obviously care about this, another conforming bill, special.
Yeah, so this had a lot of different forms, the Visit Florida and Enterprise Florida bill, there were two separate bills, and they came into one, and eventually, they made its way to a conforming bill that was a displaced homemaker bill, and it was supposed to repeal that. It did do that, but then it also created the recurring appropriation for Visit Florida for $25 million, and it gave Enterprise Florida $16 million. And then with that money, it did transparency and accountability, and a lot of it with it.
So, the 8230 question is, does the governor veto the whole budget over something like this? He might. He really cares about Visit Florida. He's concerned that in a couple of years, if this funding stays at $25 million, we'll lose tourism numbers. And he obviously thinks EFI is doing a good job. So, this, we share this with you, one, because we know that Seminole County in Oviedo has probably benefited from both of those agencies, EFI and Visit Florida, but also, this could be what ends up snagging the whole budget. So, we'll see. Katie and I are just not making any June plans, just tell you that. Solar energy, you saw the amendment that was done on the August primary ballot last year that allowed for a tax, excuse me, allowed you an exemption on property tax and tangible personal property tax. What they decided to do is do an 80/20 split. They didn't want to have too much of a burden on the local governments, but also, they wanted to give you or your county or your other fellow sister cities skin in the game, as they would say, is so if, so if one of your residents decide, or one of your businesses decides to install one of these solar or renewable energy systems, and they want the tax break, well, you can still tax up to 20%. And the whole idea is now you're motivated, at least they're thinking, you're motivated to process those permits a little faster, because now that's going to put new tax rolls on the books that will help with revenue. Hopefully, it's a win-win for everyone, but that was the law of the land they passed. They went that route with an 80/20. Somewhere down the line, they may choose to go full 100%. They're certainly allowed to under the constitutional amendment, but for purposes of this, they made it 80/20. And you'll see, they did it for Department of Defense properties, they did, they allowed that to be retroactive on the 80/20. So, if they were doing, the Department of Defense has a, I think, a 10-year goal, that they want all those bases to have a much more streamlined energy processing. So, trying to support that so we don't lose any bases if there's another crack. So, this is the one, this is all the doom and gloom part of this presentation. Before we talk about appropriations, you might have saw, there's a super homestead exemption, that's what they're calling it, headed for about. Katie's got fun detail. I give her the fun ones.
In the last week, the House and Senate finally were able, or passed, to the super homestead exemption, and that means that in 2018, you'll see on the ballot, voters can vote for the additional $25,000. And then, if it passes, it will not go into effect until January 1st of 2019. But it did pass.
So, this is creating, I don't, obviously, I don't need to tell you why you wouldn't like it, but there's a presumption in the business community, I've been talking to spokes of the Florida Chamber, now that they've all had time to digest this, that whether 2019 or inevitably, because I assume all of you and most cities across the state and counties have a little room left in their millage, very few that I'm aware of have maxed out. So, the selling point of the legislature was always, well, if it's important for this city or county to keep that revenue, they can even raise their millage if they want, which is interesting. So, pass a tax exemption so that you can pass a tax increase, and then they'll rail on you respectfully to our friends in the House and Senate if you do that. And we know, we know how this game goes. There's some in the business community who are already starting to raise concern, because they assume eventually you will, because you'll have to. There's services you provide to citizens that they do not want to give up. And so, the question is, do you cut somewhere else, or do you just cut the services? And so, who's back is that going to be on? Well, it's going to end up being on the business back, because they don't have an exemption on their homestead, there is no exemption, so to speak. There's a cap on the property tax, so to speak. So, the business community is now starting to wake up and realize that, maybe not immediately, but over time, they'll be the ones bearing the brunt of this, if a city or county chooses that instead of cutting services, they are going to just raise their millage even only slightly. Because I think I saw the average savings is something like 100, or maybe it might be 200, which, that's real money to some people, but by and large, most people would probably forego that $200 and keep all the services they have. So, I would not be surprised, between now and November 2018, if you saw the business community and some other interested parties put together some PACs and what have you to try to create some negativity around this, because again, they don't need to sell you all. I'm not going to put words in your mouth, but I assume this is not something that you're thrilled about. But they know without any kind of advertisement in the negative, this is something that passes on. So, most, any homeowner would say, oh, I get a tax break, great. They don't, most won't do the math and go, okay, so I will save $200 a year on average, but I might actually lose a day of garbage collection, or I might lose this, or I might lose that, and most of us will probably want to keep our service. Maybe not, but, so you're going to see some of that. But I put that out there because it happened this session, talking to our friends in the House and where a lot of this was pushed from, I don't think the Speaker is done trying to reform the way some of the local millage rates are set and also these exemptions. So, in talking with our friends in Lega Cities and Association of Counties, I think they're gearing up and will be brothers in arms, so to speak, on to be prepared to fight on some other issues. The good news is, is the Senate, by and large, lost the negotiation with the House. Most people would agree with that assessment. I don't think you'll see Jack Latbel as they approach Chair President Negron nears receptive to some of these policies, whether it's a conforming bill or what have you, unless the House is going to be willing negotiators on other policies, which I don't think they will be. So, the good news is, the Senate might buck up a little more in this next session and fight some of these off. Bad news is, this did pass, it will be on the ballot in 2018, and given that you're not legally allowed as a city to advocate on this, my hope is that some of the business that some of the business communities rally around this. Any questions on that particular bill?
Did they cut the sales tax, anything?
Did they gut the sales tax?
Why do they cut ours? Cut theirs?
I agree. Well, this is a French point, too. It's kind of like sunshine law. We have it and they don't, you know? Doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, that's the whole aggravating part about this. You know, it'll go out to the voters, that's fine, and whatever the voters decide is what the voters will decide. And then every local government will make its own decision, as you just pointed out. But the whole issue with this crazy session in the House in particular, and unfortunately, even some of our local House reps, who just go along with this stuff to get along, is that this is silly. You know, just shifting it is all you're doing. So they get to sit there and wave a flag, you know, we're going to give you a tax cut that doesn't affect them at all. Not one iota in their budget's affected. So I mean, that's what's wrong with this.
I don't disagree with your sentiment.
Let them cut the sales tax. That affects their budget. Cut the sales tax and cut some services, and then explain to the damn people in the state of Florida why they had to do it. And I don't even think they'd have to go to a referendum to cut the sales tax.
They don't.
Yeah. All right. I've said my piece.
So before we get to good news, I'll go over some more bad news, or just more put on your horizon. Home rule issues were paramount this session. I don't need to tell you that, but I'll repeat it. Some of these died, which is good. Actually, a good number of these died, but they will be back. And so that's why we put them out there. Local business tax, if it passed, it would have prohibited local governments from levying a local business tax if not adopted before a certain date. In some way, this will be back. This was obviously a House priority. The Senate held strong on this one. And I think before it even died, they gutted it quite a bit. And I think one of it was only, it was only to veteran companies that you couldn't do it, which was a little more, it felt good, and if you like veterans, so to speak, it didn't have near as an impact. But they're going to try this again. And then local regulations bill, that was an interesting one. I hadn't seen that before. You saw Randy Fine, who's out of the Melbourne area, file it. Again, it was a House priority, but it didn't go anywhere in the Senate. But they, again, he started big, whittled it down when he heard the instant outrage from cities and counties. But that's one that, again, is a tough sell in the Senate, but I warn you, because the Speaker and his leadership team proved adept at negotiating with the Senate. And they got some things that a lot of folks did not see coming. When we were counting noses in the Senate on the homestead exemption and some of the others, you know, two weeks before the big vote, it was perceived that it would not be a big vote. The Senate wouldn't put it on the floor. And then when it was perceived it was going to get on the floor, you started counting senators, and they're like, nope, would never do this. I recognize that this is, it's fool's gold, that it'll cut someone's property tax by $200, but they'll lose all these services and et cetera. And then all of a sudden, it's part of the budget negotiation. So we will, the League of Cities and us on working with them will obviously be a little wiser to some of these. But I would not be surprised if either one of these are in the final negotiations next year. Then vacation rentals, this wasn't so much a speaker priority, but I put on your radar. It's not one that, I think, I don't believe we have a massive Airbnb community or vacation rental community. Correct me if I'm wrong here in Oviedo. I'm sure we have some, but nothing like St. Augustine or some of the coastal communities. But this was one that was starting to move through. It started as a, just a genuine effort by a couple of members in both chambers that they didn't like, that there were certain regulations on the vacation rentals. Airbnb folks caught wind of it and decided, yeah, this is great. Let's get rid of all these regulations. Didn't pass, but again, one of those that got pushed.
Are there provisions? It didn't pass, but what worries us is, under the guise of an Airbnb, turning it into a boarding house for, you know, Pi Cap Alfa or whoever.
There's, and honestly, those are some of the examples we used on behalf of you and some other governments to make the argument of why they shouldn't pass this. It is, in some of the bigger cities, apartment complexes are turned into hotels because the landlords realize they make more money charging nightly than they do weekly. And because of this wonderful app that we've all probably used or considered using at some point, you can turn an apartment building into a hotel, which, to your point, would not prevent, because of the ability, you have boarding houses and other things, or if you restrict your ability to regulate these things, that can happen. All of those issues that you bring up and a few others are why it ended up dying. There's just, in theory, it sounds great. Get rid of the regulation and allow people to do what they want to do with their homes, if they're property. That's Americana, right? But again, when you get into this, there is a compelling need for cities and counties to deal with uses of property. So you don't have the situation where apartment complex is turning into a hotel, but it wasn't zoned that way, it wasn't designed that way, you know, the in and out flow wasn't designed that way. And the same thing, for example, we're close to a university. You don't want a fraternity or just a group of students that want to turn a house. I'm looking at Megan, we're in school at UF. They always, every year, they got yelled at because of the boarding laws. You couldn't have more than four unrelated people, I think, living in a house. Again, that was an old brothel law, but they were using it against students who didn't mind sleeping on a couch.
This is three here.
This is three.
Okay. So.
And we have been approached. We've been approached a couple of times. And our biggest concern is, of course, it's been more on the single-family side rather than the multifamily side. And it's, you know, the preservation of the neighborhood. I remember when I was in southwest Florida, there was a big market for marketing the homes to folks in Europe. For a month, you get to use the house, the boat, the car, you know, buy your own groceries, obviously, the rent paid for the utilities and everything. It became quite an industry down there that, you know, people were able to come in. They would come in from overseas and would rent the house, is what they would do. Most of the time, it was for a month. But the neighborhoods would get crazy.
Sure.
And so it can be. I did have a question about HB 17. How overarching was this, don't regulate businesses? Because I could see this really getting out of hand and getting into land development regulations and getting into, not only just business tax receipts, but, you know, it was...
And what about home rule? Isn't that in the state constitution?
I don't think they're reading that in the House, to be honest, and I love our friends there.
Well, I'm just saying, isn't this setting themselves up ripe for a lawsuit somewhere?
That's probably coming if any of these ever pass. And speaking with Dudley over in the League of Cities, we've...
I'll digress to the two attorneys sitting at the table, but I mean, that just seems to me that...
If ever one of these make it to the finish line, I think it would be extremely ripe for a lawsuit.
But they also don't have to hand us any money. It's a two-way street, so we're really going to sue them. Somebody's really going to sue them.
The League would, yeah.
Yeah, the League may sue.
But we've told, I mean, we've told Scott Dudley and the League, like, on all of these, they're coming back, and we need to be prepared with our stats and our anecdotes of, you know, whether it's the, you know, boarding issue or something else. Because again, Florida is driven by tourism, you know? So none of us are going to argue with, you know, Airbnb if they say, well, this helps drive more getting. But there's so many other related issues that come with that, that I think Airbnb is aware of and others, but, you know, sometimes they get a little blind up there. But again, it didn't pass.
I'm more concerned about the first two.
Yeah.
Someone's to rent their home out.
Well, Mr. Claude, could you give a quick recap? Because I know we've had this discussion. I'm very interested in making Airbnb allowed in Oviedo in some capacity. And it's, I don't know if this is the time to talk about it.
It's not prohibited, is it?
It kind of is limited a lot.
It's limited as far as when, if you have a single-family home in a single-family residential sounding district, and you convert that home to a business, then it is sort of limited. You know, you're taking residential property and making it into a commercial business.
Is that how Airbnb works? Or is it some guy like, lives in Augusta, Georgia, takes a trip to Colorado to ski on Masters weekend and just rents his house out to someone for the Masters? And then comes back a week later?
Could be. That's the thing, we've been, we've been trying to learn as much as we can about it, but we haven't really learned enough of it. Right now, everything appears like your concern with the rooming house, and then the concern of, well, a single-family home turning into a hotel.
There was one in Kingsbridge West, if you all remember, and it was nothing but the bane of all the residents. It was on the lake.
You know, Chris, you're right. I mean, I just look at it this way, you know, they're all, all the, you know, the reps and senators are trying to do their best up there. But the one problem I've always had with them is cities like us that have some room to, I think you can only go up to like 10 as your max millage and stuff. So if they do all this stuff, they run for their reelection, they say, well, we cut all these taxes. And then it comes back to us, and I'm always like with government, look, what are the bills? We have somebody like Jerry who's renegotiated every debt that we have. We know we're very lean, so if you keep taking this stuff away, you come in here and do the budget, we're a million dollars down. It leaves us no choice. So we look like the bad guys. And they all say, well, we cut, cut your taxes. That's the problem. At some point, the mayor is right, you know, there's going to have to be a suit because there is home rule powers, and every year, it gets worse and worse and worse to step on it.
They're like children up there. I hate to say this.
I mean, it's really, they, but now, having said all that, you know, you know, some cities probably don't run like us. We look at it from a different avenue, and they're trying to curb cities that are out of control. We're not out of control.
Who are they trying to punish? That's a great point.
They really are. It's kind of like, you know, if you look at Sunshine, Sunshine wasn't, you know, it was more other places that created it, you know, and not other cities, you know? So you have to watch how it goes. Can I ask you a quick question on that wasn't in here? Because you and I have talked about this. What's the deal with the texting law? Why can we not get this passed? This is so needed.
I know, they're so worried about this.
This is so needed, and they won't pass the law. I mean, people dying out there every day.
So as I told you, there was a workshop, I think that could, you're see, so it comes down to core beliefs of these members in both chambers, and it's a freedom issue in their minds.
Right. Driving a car is a license, though. It's not a freedom.
Agreed. So, and I think they're starting to get there. It sort of comes down to the seatbelt. Like, there probably, once upon a time, there were members who said, don't require me to wear a seatbelt or wear a helmet. It's my freedom. It's my, it's my car. But then there's also stats that show if you're not wearing a seatbelt and you're driving and you get into an accident and you're not restrained, well, then your car can go careen somewhere else, or maybe you need to care for other passengers in there. So there's an argument that it's actually not just your personal liberty because you can protect others.
Yeah, but you'd be secondary then if you can't...
And texting, yeah. And texting is a very similar thing. There's an argument of, hey, it's, technology's almost getting to the point where we don't need to worry about this law. That's one argument you'll hear. Or it's, hey, it's my, I know when it's appropriate use or not, I shouldn't have to be worried about a cop pulling me over if I have my phone in my hand. There's, again, it goes to a freedom thing, but none of them will argue the stats. And you're seeing in the House where, this is where quote-unquote "freedom issues" go to die, like, meaning it's to preserve the quote "freedom." You're seeing the House shift because every year that goes by, every month that goes by, they're more aware of the fatalities that result of these casualties and just, you drive on a road, it's obvious. I mean, if you see a car swerving, you don't, they're either on the phone because they don't have a hands...
It's for you seeing the green light.
Or they're, yeah.
Yeah.
So, and self-driving cars is the only thing that'll fix that. That's still decades away, where everyone will have a self-driving car.
So you think, you know, it's just like the seatbelt, remember, it was the same thing, wear your seatbelt, secondary, you think it's coming? You think eventually?
I think eventually. I think it's a tough sell still, but I do think it's coming. Just because, again, it's hard to argue with the stats, like, even the most boisterous defenders of it are being less, they're less inclined to defend.
You know, the thing is with that, and I, and you know, I don't get on too many issues, but that one has crossed my mind, like, you know what? If they don't fix that law, I'm here because of one thing that happened, you know, 12 years ago. I'm getting so aggravated with that. You have every police chief, sheriff, all of them, they continually go up there and they say, please pass this, give us the tools. I mean, I blow my horn 50 times a day, people are coming in my lane, and I just don't get it. You know, this personal freedom stuff, most people, I, you know, sometimes politicians at a little higher level, they get on this kick, and the average Joe doesn't care. He wants to go out in the street and know, like, I'm going to be able to drive there and I don't have to worry about this. It's a lot different when we were younger, driving, you know? Your distraction was the radio, you know? But they got to get on that, they really do. I mean, that's something, somebody's got to take the ball at some high level and get on it, you know?
Thinking a little bit outside the box, there would be, like I was telling you with the homestead exemption, the only hope to really defeat that is get the business community motivated that this is actually not such a good deal for them. I'd say the similar argument, not saying they don't care about cities or counties.
Right.
There's some people at the table that might say they don't. But finding, making a business case of, for whatever reason, maybe it's because people are just getting to work slower, getting around because they got to worry about weaving around people who are distracted on their phones. If there's some arguments there to be made that this is actually costing Florida money because it's slowing down commerce, so to speak, and the chamber, someone would get behind that, I think you'd start to see some momentum because they get scored by the chamber, they get scored by some of these groups. AT&amp;T puts it on their platform, but again, I can assure you, they're not, my friends at AT&amp;T, they're not going into those legislative offices, because we need one thing this year, and we need you to pass that, no texting. No, they're talking about their 5G wireless to put on poles so that they can better deliver signals and create cost savings.
On any pole, anywhere.
Say what?
On any pole, anywhere.
Yes.
Let's talk about that. Anything on the utility relocation bill?
That, not so much this year. There was the AT&amp;T, well, it was called the ATT bill. They probably, whether they like it or not, they probably wish it was just called the utility bill. But that dealt with poles and the 5G, but not so much on relocation. So there was some discussion of it, but it kind of went away.
Did that pass, that 5G bill?
It did. Now, but it only got momentum to pass when, I'll give Latval's credit on that, he and a couple of others brokered the deal that would, it's not market rate, but it's significantly more than what ATT came in. And maybe that was what they were prepared to pay all along, and that was the middle ground. But the proof will be in the pudding. When they go into cities and do this, and there's clearly, it's costing, if there are situations where the city is losing money because of the time of staff that they have to put on this to process the permits and be around the maintenance of these poles, I think there's a receptive audience in both chambers that would say, okay, maybe we do need to allow market rates on the permits on these. But otherwise, I think it was 110 or, I'm not going to remember the exact number, but it was a compromised number that cities could charge per poll. That gives AT&amp;T predictability or others providers predictability and gives the cities some revenue out of it, whereas the initial set was no revenue. So, last one we'll bring up, and of course, answer any questions, is we did get 100,000 in the budget for the post office renovation or pass Trailhead. So it wasn't the full amount we wanted, and there were other projects we were looking at. And I'll go ahead and say that I was disappointed we couldn't get more. The good news is, one, it's in, and I feel comfortable where we are postured with this governor's office. Two, because of the House's exercise of cutting, cutting way back the budget, it's conservatively estimated that they're going to have a pretty substantial surplus next year to work with, that our friends in the Senate will have no problem spending on projects, and our friends in the House will probably also want projects too because it is election year. So next year, I feel very bullish on some of these projects. And one thing, if I can wave the magic wand, is whether it's we go for more money on this project or something else, let's try to look for projects that check the box of economic development, obviously. And again, depending on how you sell it with the Speaker, that's because we saw how he treated EFI, but also, anything that's innovative economic development, and then, of course, to the extent we can make the case statewide impact. In meeting with Representative Broder and Senator Simmons, they obviously believe in the projects, and they said one of the bigger pushbacks they got, again, it's not your fault, it's a local project. Of course, it's, the phrase that they used in the House and Senate was, they don't want to fund swing sets for your backyard, they want to fund projects that benefit the state of Florida.[1629.26] But I always say, the quality of life in Oviedo or any other community has improved that much more through a project than the quality of life in Florida has improved because last I checked, people are still moving to Florida. A lot of them are moving to our region. And that's probably not on accident. Oviedo and other communities surrounding the more metropolitan downtown Orlando area have become destination meddling communities. Obviously, there's still business here and there's other things, but you have a great reputation. So my selling point, I guess it worked, at least to make sure we got something in the budget, was that should count for something. Not every project in the budget's going to be like what they're doing with UCF and Bridge down in the Cielo County, these, these large, you know, advanced manufacturing. Those are wonderful, but not every project can do that. If you ignore some of the basic things, we run a risk of not being that family-friendly state that everyone wants to move to. So, I say all that, they will have surplus next year unless some kind of catastrophic change in the economy happens. And as a result, we should, and I'm gonna encourage you and your staff to lean on both the Senator and Representative to go after more projects and let's see what we can get into that budget. But again, be mindful of those boxes and, and seeing if we can check those. That makes our job easier and it makes it a little easier for the legislators to sell.
Cool. Anything on sober homes?
Yeah, major reform package passed this year and I can send it to you.
Okay.
It's a...
Does anyone, everyone know what those are?
No.
I remember you bringing it up, I don't remember. It's an issue on, they're basically homes where folks have been out of a rehab and they go live in what they call a sober home. And it's basically a boarding house, but they're using the ADA laws to, to get around the boarding laws and then charging insurance companies $3,000 a day or whatever because they're being rehabilitated in these homes. And they're...
There's a lot of issues with the marketing practices around them and such. That's what the reform mainly did. I can send that to you. It's, it's, I know that's an issue here, it's a huge issue down in South Florida and that was what was driving the discussion. But they did pass, fully expect the governor to sign that. Mayor, I wanna tell you about our, our expressway and some of the issues there. Robert and I had several conversations with Mr. Giacomo over at the Turnpike Authority. Not surprising, they were not excited about this, but here's an interesting thing, and we're gonna explore this next year. It was too late in session when we finally kind of figured out what we think might be the right play on this, is in some of the coastal communities where they have bridges and such, they have local resident passes that are actually through SunPass and SunTrust. The state, the state senator for Transportation Economic Development, Probst Committee, Jeff Brandis, all but 100% committed that if we wanna try and put that in next year's budget or put it in a bill, he will help support it on the Senate side. And I'm certain Jason can help us on the House side. Turnpike won't like it, Neil DOT, but it, we had, when I walked him through the case, kinda asking for his thoughts because I told DOT, kinda, I'm gonna say this respectfully because they were very cordial in it, but they essentially said, pound sand, we're not interested.
Oh, they told Brian to add that.
So...
That's, that's a nice version.
Yeah.
They told us.
I mean, I'm being nice.
They almost threw us out.
Giacomo and them, they're good people to work with and they do a lot of good things in our community and we got good projects, but they were not interested, I'll just say that. When, when speaking with the Senator and asking, because he's very much a transportation guru, he says, well, have you thought about this? And I said, yeah, but isn't that for like bridges? And he's like, could be for yours. Why wouldn't it be allowed for yours? Get a residential pass that, so they're still paying a toll, but it would be, if they wanna choose to buy the local resident pass, it would be a much more reduced toll for that particular exit over the course of a year. So if they assume they're gonna take right at once a day or multiple times a week, it would save. So that is something we'll look to do next year. I think it'll be a good idea and hopefully give some relief to some of the folks that, because again, when I walked him through, he said, totally get it. Like, why would they take the backstreets and take an extra 15 minutes on their commute when they can just hop right on and hop right off and get like, you know, a mile down the road and that much quicker? Why would we want them to take the longer route when the quicker route is right there?
Sound like a good compromise.
Yeah. So that DOT doesn't get robbed of too much money, so to speak, and...
Well, that, that, that sounds very interesting. It just has to be a fair toll. I mean, right now, it's, it's a dollar to go a mile and a half or two miles, whatever.
Talking from Red Bull.
And what about, this came up in League of Cities.
434.
Trying to get some of the toll fees to go towards compensating first responders from the cities that have to go out on the toll road and, and respond to accidents and such. We don't get any compensation for that.
Interesting. You get, I'll ask the dumb question because I don't know. So we, the city or the county, whoever has to go respond, if it's zero compensation, if you have, because I realize if it's on your...
We don't get any funds from the tolling agencies when we go to a, respond to a call.
If it was a vehicle accident, it likely, transport services would be billed to that carrier for that occasion. Interesting, at one point in time, the toll authority was going to charge us for the use of SunPass and the tolls. Car, car chiefs can regulate such toll charges with the accidents on their highways and they back off and you have a first train following you.
You're a little persnickety about that toll.
Gotta protect that bond rating. So, okay, interesting. So I did, I was unaware of that. So obviously, it's your jurisdiction. If it's in Oviedo city limits, even if it's on the highway, you, you guys are the responders. Interesting. And nine times out of 10, they're probably not Oviedo residents.
And that was, I think...
And they're not using roads that you maintain, that you're responsible for.
From League of Cities, I think it was coming out of South Florida, where you know, you got Turnpike going through all these little municipalities and they're having to respond to these calls and not getting anything out of it.
How, could we work up some numbers, what that's actually, I mean, because obviously some of it gets covered through carriers and, but I'm sure there's still gaps in that cupboard or the costs.
I would think we have our toll charges. I would think we have our toll charges.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not, I'll get that software and capture the, the incident, of course, if there's a break, you build the database to get to that thing of...
You may be able to.
And it's not just fire, it's not just fire. The, the, the closest and then very impressive, I think, to work and come and get there will respond, you, if it's not incident. Somebody has to give down into the report to find the address of where we mentioned things. And some of that's kind of...
Yeah, HIPAA issues there. Okay. But if, in a minimum...
Are you trying to figure out, are you trying to cross-check to see who is from Oviedo who has an accident? Because that's more complicated than just how many accidents you've responded to.
I think just at a minimum, number of accidents that you handle on 417 would be a good starting point to say, we handle X amount.
Because that you could do with transponders pretty easily. If you access it, you'd probably go in there to do something.
All righty, well, we have another item on the agenda yet and Mr. Groot's outside. Is there anything else in Mr. Carmody?
I will, I'll check on DOH. I'll get you sober homes and I'll get you a copy of this, if you need it for your records.
Get us that, get us that text in law.
I thought you were saying Silver Howe Homes. That's like sober. What's that?
Chris, Katie, thank you.
Thank you. When appropriate, let me know. So quick, I'm sorry, I'll hold up, but it's quite an important note. They start, it's, next year's the early session, January and February. They took advantage of the even-year constitution rule so they could have another early one. Selfishly, it's great, I get to enjoy spring back home, but it also means September, they will be back in committee meetings and you can start, the members can start filing bills, I think, as early, they can put them in drafting now, I'm pretty sure they can start...
We have to get you priorities next month or the month after.
That's what I was gonna say. So the appropriations bills, they haven't announced what will be the drafting deadlines in some of those. But, I mean, if we know some specific policy priorities like this toll issue, we can start giving those to Representative Broder and Senator Simmons to put in drafting and start working with staff to figure out how that would be worded and drafted. But two, on the appropriations issues, they haven't announced when those filing deadlines are up, but my perspective will be, let's find the ones we think are good ones. I mean, they're all good, you know what I mean? But the ones that we can sell best up in Tallahassee and let's get those in the hands of our, our members ASAP to get filed, vetted, and then published in a bill that we, Katie and our team can start working on, getting through the committee hearings. So...
Great.
But yeah, it'll, it'll be September, October will be heavy, November will be heavy, December, I've seen some years they skip it. And if they have a meeting in December, it's usually the first week and they shut down. And then January, February, it's off to the rest and roll.
So what, what that means for the newbies, if, if you're interested in being on a committee with the League of Cities, they'll start at the annual conference and then they'll have meetings in September and October rather than going up into December.
Please join up. And of course, anytime you wanna go to Tallahassee, we love company. We even have a couch, if you wanna see.
All right.
Thank you, Chris.
Good job, Chris. Good stuff.
Have a great day.
All righty, so let's move into item number two so we can get ready for our executive session. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you, discussion of election costs.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. As you know, this year, we are...
Off-year election.
Yes, we have an off-year election. And so tonight, we just wanted to get some guidance from you. We've been having some discussions with the supervisor of elections. We provided you with a spreadsheet that basically explains that if we do all of our, open up all of our precincts for one day of voting, it's going to cost us $19,711. That's the estimate. If we added a day of early voting in one location, it would increase the cost to $20,911. One of the things that we found out, like Altamont, Altamont is not opening up all of their precincts. They're gonna open up two precincts and they're not going to do early voting. And so what we wanted to get an idea from you is if you would entertain not opening up all of our precincts, obviously, I know some data that we learned from one of our precincts, one of our smaller precincts, where last time we had an off-year election, we only had two people vote that day. But we opened up the precinct and so it cost us the full amount of money anyway for those two folks to vote. It has been recommended to us that we consider finding our two largest precincts, opening those up and then notifying everyone that you would vote in one of those two locations. If we need, we could also maybe look at the three largest precincts. It was, I believe, the, what the supervisor of elections has asked is that if we do early voting, they will have a corresponding, their office will be open that day as well. And they've recommended a couple of dates, I believe, to us in November, or just the weekend prior. One of the things we might wanna look at, if you want to do our voting, I would recommend do it on the Saturday and then we would pick a location either here or some other location in a, a city facility that could accommodate it. But we wanted to get an idea from you. I know we've had the discussion before about, you know, how open do we want this or do we want to limit the number of precincts, you know, and how, or if we want to...
All the voters would realize how much simpler this would all be if we were all just on even election cycles.
It would be very much easier, yes.
Because these off-year elections are costly and are...
I think that the hardest part of it...
Not open to everybody, so to speak.
Are we allowed to go really extreme and say, just vote by absentee ballot?
I don't know if we can do that.
Okay, I'm wondering, what's, what's the most extreme we can do versus the most generous we could be?
We have a huge cost of absentee ballots this year.
There is, it's a $1.50 a ballot, but to not open any polls would be a fantastic thing in a way.
I think we would have to at least open...
Open one poll for voting, for actual voting day?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
All right, Brian, here's my, here's my thought. I've been doing this in the off-year. I, I like, this is my thing, the one day of early voting on Saturday, I like that. And Live Oak, Riverside Park and City Hall, and I think we've done that in the past. This way you cover the whole city, you have three, and I think that's good. That's my...
Right, because we don't, I felt cost here for City Hall.
Live Oak, Riverside and City Hall.
Yep. And one day of early voting on Saturday.
Could we just do two?
I, I was thinking, because early voting during our election was at the library and the Aquatic Center.
Which was silly.
Huh?
Which was silly.
Haven't been that close? Yes.
It was, but, but I think the Aquatic Center's a good, a good location for, for individuals.
There's a lot of parking there. And it's very central.
The hard part with, with the Aquatic Center is that we have to take all of our programs and push them somewhere else.
That's why...
That was, that was the difficulty in doing that, was that we lost a lot with our programming. We, thank, thank goodness for a lot in Child's Middle School. That's what I can basically say, is that they were a tremendous help to us as far as the use of their gym. The, when the election office goes into your facility, basically your facility shuts down. It's all they do because they have to protect the machines. And so it's, and it, you can't have your program is going. So that's the difficulty. When we're able to use the multipurpose room, it, it makes it easier because they will allow us to still do things in the gym and in the exercise facility. It's when they go into the gymnasium. And so if we're...
You could, you could do Center Lake Park too.
We could look at Center Lake Park.
Right across the middle, Center Lake, Riverside, Live Oak, and you're right across the center of the city. Three. You have one, one on the east side, one on the west side.
I was just trying to keep it to places where like, you don't have to mess up your program.
The good, good part about, the good thing about using City Hall on a Saturday is that you're not losing any type of, like, any type of rental value that you might have.
You figure that, City Hall...
Aquatic Center seems fine, if that's cheaper.
But you lose your program in that day.
Yeah, that's what he was saying.
But does it have to be in that room or there's no, it sounds like the multipurpose room is okay?
We would have to, we would have to work with the supervisor. Like, last year was a large election.
So you need more room.
And so in the primaries, in the primaries, we used the multipurpose room. But during the general election in November, we actually, for the entire two weeks of early voting, we actually used the gymnasium. So we had to get all of our programs out into other facilities in order to...
And that was difficult. I remember when Mike approached us about that and staff sat down and tried to figure it out.
It wasn't easy.